Order it is six thirty two. Michelle, can you call the roll?
Mayor Sue McNamara.
Here.
Rock Mc- McDonald.
Here.
Those MC names. Josh Swig.
Here.
Lynn Midyatt.
Here.
And Hinar Schiller.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Okay, if we would, you would join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Andrew here? Is he on?
No.
Oh, okay.
He'd be over on the side there.
Yeah.
And Patrick's not here.
Okay, well, hmm.
What does it say down there?
Uh, it says, "Board of Orders, news, close." It doesn't show.
All righty, let me turn my phone back on.
Anybody here?
Okay, we're trying to get the touch.
Somebody's...
Nope, I don't hear anybody either. Okay, well, in that case, Lynn, would you care to make a motion and a second to discuss and accept the agenda as posted?
I move that we accept the agenda as posted.
Anybody care for a second, please?
A second.
Thank you. Do we need any discussion? I think it's pretty straightforward. An aye to accept.
Aye.
Nay?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Do you want to...
It says that I'm in another meeting.
Read the minutes, or would you wish to waive that? And if you wish to waive that, can I have a motion and a second to waive?
I make a motion, we waive the minutes.
Second?
A second.
Any, all aye?
All aye.
Any opposed? Meeting minutes reading are, is waived. Does, does any of the audience have any comments, questions, discussion you care to raise? Val?
I just have a request for review on the golf cart ordinance, section three forty dot one one seven C number three. And it reads...
Could you speak up a little bit?
I'll try. My mouth issue, I'll do my best. Operate the golf cart between the hours of official sunset and sunrise unless a golf cart is properly equipped with headlights, taillights, brake lights, and signal, turn signals. Now, this is a minor request. However, I didn't read in there that it mentions the use of those, that equipment between the hours of sunset and dawn.
So it's that they have to have it equipped, but they don't have to have them on?
It does not say that they are in use during that period of time, and I'm just asking if we could give you that little minor thing.
And Val, I beg your pardon, but I was a little distracted here. Are you talking about lights on golf carts?
It's, it's, it's the use of a golf cart between, during night, between dusk and dawn. And we mentioned in the ordinance that the equipment that we're asking, but not the use of that equipment during that period of time.
Okay.
Could you, the code number again, sir?
Yes, it's section three four zero dot one one seven C number three.
Thank you.
The golf cart, the golf course maintenance groups do drive their golf carts early in the morning, like at six. Are you saying they can't either?
No, no, no. They need, anything that, that, any golf cart from dusk to dawn should not be on our streets unless it has lights. No, I mean, I think that's what the ordinance contention is.
Right.
But it doesn't say that in the ordinance that it needs to, the lights need to be on. So I, I know it's small, but it's those small things.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Okay, we will consider that and look into changing it. Thanks, Val.
For me?
Frances?
I, I'm not sure what your tree protection discussion is pertaining to tonight, whether or not it pertains to tree fences, you know, problems, you know, mitigating problems with deer rutting, or what it's about. But if I knew what it's about, I might, you know, have something to say about it.
Well, on my agenda, it's under mayoral updates, and when we get to that, I'm sure you'll understand more. Okay? Chris, do you have something you want to report?
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of January, we had a hundred and fifty-two radio assignments and self-initiated assignments about police officers. We had five incidents that required port reporting. We had seven burglar alarms, all of which were false. We had no open doors, but we did have thirteen open garage doors that were found throughout the evening, throughout the night watch. We had no injury accidents. We did have two very minor non-injury accidents. One was out right out in front here on Clarkson, and the other one was on Crestview Middle School parking lot. We had twenty-one moving violations that were issued in January, and eight non-moving violations, citations that were issued, and sixty-two warnings for a total of a hundred, rather, ninety-one tickets and warnings together. There were no arrests throughout the month. We had a check of the welfare of a resident who was suicidal and left their home with a weapon and was later located in another jurisdiction. We did some phone taps and traces and pings and were able to find him. We had two of our residents that passed away this month. They were all, they were died of natural causes. And as you can see there, just the very beginning of this month, I thought it was important to put it in the, in the, this monthly. I'll have more at the end of the month, obviously, but we are starting to see a resurgence of these guys that are coming in in the night and going through the cars. They are armed, we've got good video of them, we've got good pictures of them, and we zoom in on them, and you can see they've got guns in their hands as they're going through the cars. So it's, it's not just here, it's happening all around us here. But this, in the last week, it's happened on Forest Club, at number forty-one, then number twenty-seven, I think. So they did go into one of the cars and took out some basketball equipment and some other stuff, but they haven't gotten anything of any real value yet. So just need to reiterate to everybody to lock their cars and don't confront these guys. I mean, that's very important, the residents know not to confront these guys, because what's gonna happen is they're gonna get spooked, turn around, and fire a shot at somebody. So we certainly don't want that to happen. The detectives are working this feverishly with other police agencies, and, you know, unless they leave, they're using cars that have the license plates on them. And we've got good video of the cars, but they have no plates on them. So we're trying to locate them. We did find some other additional, I don't think I'm giving away too much here, but we've got some other additional video of them throughout that night at convenience stores in the area, everything, trying to get good facial features of them, so. But anyway, just to reiterate, need to lock the cars and make sure that we don't give them the opportunity to break in and get into them. There was no incidents at Marquette, and we just had minor motor vehicle accident at Crestview this month.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to say, I'm very, as opposed to bills, resident, I'm very concerned in a club member, because I think the, the workout room opens really early. I don't know at that five, there's a five o'clock, I don't know if it's now or further in the spring. But they were seen at four twenty-six on Forest Club Drive Plus. Our maintenance crews come in, and some kitchen people come in fairly early. And so I did have a conversation with, with...
Recording in progress.
Sorry.
Their staff, that if they do, if somebody is around the club, or just not to approach anybody, that these people are bad, you know, for their own safety. And just, or, you know, for any club member that's going.
Well, Val, I appreciated your sending that video, and I sent that out to my neighborhood. And I don't know if you all have similar email addresses for your neighbors. If you could distribute that as much, as far and as wide as possible, that would be great, because it is a serious issue. And I don't want any of our residents hurt by trying to confront them and chase them off.
And I think it, it's, I think that a, we've sent it out, we sent it out this Sunday. But I, I think it's also important to remind people to actually call Chesterfield Police, because I have a resident that didn't do it, who saw the truck the week before parked on her street at five a.m., sitting on the opposite side of the street. It's supposed to be on in front of a mailbox, and then, then it backed up to a neighbor nail. I, I don't know what, she didn't know what they were doing. She just happened to get up to get a drink of water. So I just think it's important that we remind people, call the police.
Exactly. We, forever, decades, and decades, we've been, you know, preaching that. People have a natural reluctance to call the police. They think they're gonna bother us, or whatever it is, we're constantly fighting that fight. They need to call us at the time, because still so many things of a positive nature come from notifying us at the time that it's in progress or just occurred. Whereas, two days later, where they wanna have the police officer call them on the phone and tell them about this, really doesn't do anything, because all the, all the evidence is gone, are been moved, or the kids have been driving their cars, and all kinds of things, so, yeah.
Yeah, what do you do, you know?
Dead horse has left the barn, as they say.
So.
Okay.
But it might be nice if, you know, if the city puts something out about this once again, and just encourage people to look at their Ring cameras and see if there's anything in the last week where it looked odd, and notify us if in fact there was something like that.
Yeah, we'll send, we'll make sure we send out a neighborhood or citywide email. So, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Do you need to set up something with Chesterfield on the Ring cameras? Is there something to do with that?
Well, that's, yeah, yeah, and that's another, another aspect of that. We can, as residents, we can all register our cameras with Chesterfield Police Department. Ours are all registered, and I think most of the neighbors on my street who have cameras have done so.
Yeah, because what that does is allows us then, when something does happen in a given area, to know where all the cameras are. That means instead of going up to everybody's door, you have cameras, you have cameras, we know where they are.
Yeah.
And we can't go and ask to get copies of their videos.
Okay, we'll work, we'll work on that. We'll send something out. Okay, I have some exciting news to announce, and that is that we are looking at some additional space here in the building that will allow us a little more room to expand. We don't have too many details just yet. We met with, met with folks on Monday just to get the news, and more details will be forthcoming as they become available. So that's sort of a work in progress, but I'm real excited about that. We are going to, we have scheduled a coffee and/or wine with the mayor for Sunday, eighteen February. That will be at Forest Hills. It'll be a cash bar, if you wish to purchase adult beverages, but coffee, soft drinks, and light snacks will be available. We hope we get a reasonably good turnout. Short notice, it's been a scramble since the holidays, but February the eighteenth, so two to four. We are currently looking into some grants to host a shredding and re, electronic recycling event. Winchester has done this for a number of years. There is money available from, I think it's the county, and they underwrite the expenses for this. They bring a, a truck to a site, and since we have the parking lot, I think we could easily do this. It's a drive-through event, you bring as much paper as you want, they shred it there on the spot. And they also offer an opportunity to recycle large electronic equipment. If you have a, you know, flat-screen TV that's no longer functional, a copier, stuff like that, an old microwave, it's a good way to dispose of those things safely. We don't have any dates for that yet. We just got the paperwork for the grant, for the grant information, so we're in the process of filling that out, but I don't think it'll take too long. So I'm thinking, hopefully, May. It'll take a couple of months once the paperwork gets in, but May or June to, to host that. And again, it'll probably be right out here in front of the building. We, last, last, last week, I guess, we drafted and passed six ordinances for building fee permits. We simplified everything from the way they were previously structured in a manner that is consistent with most of the other townships in the county. It's a basic fee to walk in and fill out the permit, and then it's structured in terms of six dollars and fifty cents per thousand dollar value on each project. And our building inspector, Brad Holmes, is very proficient at being able to ascertain the value of a project. So if somebody comes in and says, "I wanna remodel my kitchen, it's only gonna cost me ten thousand dollars," he's very able to look at that and go, "Yeah, no, it's more than that." So I, I think that's a good thing. We're making, we're, we're updating all of our systems as much as possible. We also drafted an ordinance and approved an ordinance, including the liquor license fees for the club for the past thirty-some-odd years. Liquor licenses in the state of Missouri are allowed to be as high as one thousand dollars. For the past thirty-some-odd years, the club has been charged seventy-five dollars. They will now be paying six hundred and fifty dollars, and that will be a liquor license that is good from Monday through Saturday, and then a special license for Sunday. So we will be a little bit lower than most of the other townships around, but we're, and we're a little lower than most of the other private clubs, but we're much closer to par. This month, we will start, I wanna start looking at our review, any outdated codes, and either update them or eliminate them. And I, to that end, Andrew and I discussed briefly the holiday light ordinance, which posts a specific deadline of dates. You cannot use holiday lights before this date, and they must, you must not use them after a specific date. The problem is, if you look around, things have changed. Halloween lights are up all over. We have people who decorate pool lights, portofino lights, under their decks and around their, the exterior of their home. Matter of fact, I have a house that faces the back of mine across Currie's Ridge, and it is completely decorated with holiday lights. So we either need to modify those outdated ordinances that require specific dates, or limit the dates, or just eliminate the ordinance completely. And that's something we're gonna have to discuss. So one other thing, I hope to fill two vacancies on the Board of Adjustment, and I'd like you all from Ward Two and Ward Three to solicit some participation. I need two people, I need one from Ward Two and one from Ward Three, or I need two from Ward Three. Ward One is pretty well filled. We've got three members from Ward Three, or Ward One, but one each, two from Ward Two, and we only have one from Ward Three. So if you all could reach out to some of your residents and solicit that, that'd be great. We are looking at photographers to take board members' headshots. I have currently one estimate in hand, and that is about, gentlemen estimated it's about twelve hundred dollars for a day's worth of work, and that would include eight shots for all of us, Michelle, myself, and all of the board members. So if anyone has any suggestions on names that you'd care to put forward and nominate to do that, that would be great. I have asked Lynn, Jeff, and Greg if they would help identifying and structuring the budget for next year. Last year, we were behind the eight ball because of the election, and Mayor Douglas had gotten it started, I believe, did he start it or no, before the election? He hadn't started it?
No.
Okay. So our fiscal year ends thirty-June, starts one-July. We were, in the first week of July, by the time we adopted the budget, I don't want to be in that position again, so we're gonna start earlier. We have a meeting scheduled, actually, tomorrow to discuss this. Concurrent with that discussion, we will also be discussing what we will need to find, to identify a likely candidate to replace Michelle when she's ready to leave. That's gonna take some time for someone to become proficient at all the things she knows and does. So we are, we are gonna have to identify the criteria by which we would be interested in hiring someone, as well as compensation and benefits. So those two things we'll discuss tomorrow. I got a few additional names for IT and web management from a variety of sources, one of which was provided by the club. Actually, two were provided by Forest Hills, and they look to be good candidates, so Andrew has reached out to those, and I think he's actually gotten a couple of responses from people. We are still looking at new logos, and I brought a couple of, you all should have some samples. Do we have samples in here?
In the, in the folder.
In the folder, okay.
Part of their folders.
Okay.
Yours is in the back, everyone else's is in the front.
Oh, right, I just, yeah. Most recently, I received a note from a friend of mine who suggested a woman that he works with. He's a professional photographer, I've worked with him in the past through advertising, he's very good. He has a wide range of acquaintances in the business. This woman is the name of, is by the name of Dina Bright. She has estimated that for her to do her logos with three to five comps, and comps are what we saw earlier. These are essentially comps. It's an arrangement of a number of different styles, formats, and layouts. Those are comps. So she has agreed to do a total of, where was it? I lost, three to five comps, black and white design with a, a good feel, with our input. And that would include revisions, and then she would create two to three color versions of the approved logo, and that's complete through Camera Ready Art. Camera Ready Art means that is what we need to build in order to take that to a printer for a business card, it's stationary, any other use signage that we might have. Her fees would be somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve, around fifteen hundred to two thousand, a little less if it happens faster. Her rate is a hundred dollars an hour. I also have attached the new logo of St. Louis County. I don't know if you have this, y'all have this in front of you? It's a red circular logo.
It's right behind you.
I know it, I've seen it. I'm just laughing, 'cause it's a funny logo.
Yeah, it's entertaining. I just wanna bring this as an example, case in point. This new logo for the county cost ninety thousand dollars. It's a chunk of change. Ours is not going to cost ninety thousand dollars. If you flip that page over, behind there, you have the new Four Souls logo. What they did was take the old logo and retrofitted it. I believe their charges were somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred dollars. I don't know how much work went into this, but I'm quoting these, so you all have some frame of reference when it comes to cost on this. Then following that, we have a number of layouts that you all probably have seen before. The graphic tree with the city of Clarkson Valley, that's page one, A and B. That, as I've explored further, requires a usage buyout, for a complete buyout. Any logo that you come up with that has a low, an icon as a design element requires ownership. This is what Sam used to do. So her, their buyout for this icon, this tree, would be five hundred dollars. Then we would have to have the rest of the logo built. It would have to be typeset and digitized. That reminds me, I want to mention that, somewhere I have the paperwork, Chesterfield is not changing their logo, but they are digitizing it, which means they will get a much better reproduction when they go to print or use it for signage. It will be a higher resolution. Just to take that logo and digitize it has cost them a total of five thousand dollars. Same logo, just cleaned it up for resolution. Then we have, behind that, we have some logos that Bill Tuttle was kind, kind enough to provide. You all have seen most of these before. There's page three with several different versions. I'd welcome input from you all and some discussion to see what your thoughts are. He has, these are just illustrations of the logo as they stand, that's page three. And Michelle gang them up in terms of column A and column B. On the back page is page four with slightly different versions of the same logo. Then page five would be a copy of what our, our letterhead would look like using these logos. And that includes page six as well, same thing. Down at the bottom of page six is an example of what would be used for a business card. Page seven is another stationary layout. Page nine includes a layout of a business card. And so on and so forth. So, and page eleven as well. So there are some modifications that we can make if you like these. On the other hand, if you feel that these are good, but maybe not, we're not quite there yet, there are some alternatives. But again, I quote you the prices of what has been done by Chesterfield and St. Louis County and the club, just so you know the value of the work that needs to be done. So, does anybody have any discussion there?
I think we should keep our original one. I gave you my, my business card, which shows that the logo on it looks very good. It's not a dead tree, it's a bare tree, as you wrote in your column, and there's a lot of bare trees. And a bare tree looks great when you look at the architecture of it, and that's what we were looking at, the architecture. And that's what we were looking at. The architecture of our bear tree looks better than these architectures of the ones that you, examples that you have shown. So therefore, I think that we should stick with our current logo. You're concerned about putting it on a shirt. If we can't, you know, they've done a lot with embroidering. And I don't know if Michelle has the original vector file for the, you don't. Do you have the Adobe Illustrator AI?
I do not.
You don't have any of that?
No.
Because the other thing is, even if we don't want to do it with embroidering, we could also do a screen print. But the embroidering has improved. The last time it was tried to be embroidered was before my time.
Yeah.
Because Bill Hammerschmidt had done it. So therefore, you know, I think we should look at that. I think the history of our co, our logo is great because it was made by a person at Burt Marquette in the art department. I was a student, and she got $500 for it. And with that, she gave the money to the art department to buy supplies. And I think that's a very good history.
Okay. Well, thanks, Anora. I will add that I see nothing wrong with updating this logo. This logo is 36 years old. It is, I think, dated. I think we could clean it up quite a bit. To your point, Anora, and to Michelle's, regardless of whether we continue to use this logo or not, any other application is going to require it built. We are going to have to go to production with that, and someone is going to have to put this together technically, so it's usable. It can't just go to a printer and make a copy of it. So there is a price for that. I don't know what that would be. We would have to consult a graphics company to see what their time would be and involved to do that. To your point, the vector files don't exist. Adobe is probably not the most effective program to use at this point to do that either. There are different technologies currently available.
Right. No, this was old. That's why I said Adobe. She might have the Adobe file because it's old.
Yeah, and even if we had those files, I don't think they'd be usable at this point. One of the logos that you see, an example of the graphic tree that I mentioned, was a $500 usage fee, was done by the school. Those are supplied by students.
Is that Page One?
Pardon me?
Is that Page One?
Yeah, but that, again, is, requires a buyout of that icon, that tree icon, and it would also have to be built. So we're kind of, we have the world as our oyster. We can choose what we wish to do. So I'm asking that you consider these and give it some thought, and I would really like to hear some input, if not immediately, then certainly by next month. And Anora, we understand your position's clear. So thank you.
Well, it's not because I'm sentimental. I'm just saying, it's a nice looking one. I gave you my business card. That's what it looks like, and it looks great.
I think all our business cards look the same. So, Anora, excuse me, I think we're clear on the business cards. We all have the same cards. So thank you. Gentlemen, do you have any comments you want to add at this time? Nope?
Not at this time.
Okay. Think about it. If you have any other sources you'd care to nominate, please let me know. We are looking, Francis, to your point, our tree discussion is really more limited to tree preservation. If, under some circumstances, a large number of trees are compelled to be removed for some reason, there are, most of the other cities around have an ordinance that requires a replacement of a certain number of trees. We have a project going on right now at Forest Club that, due to some stream and creek erosion and bed erosion, they are necessitating, it necessitates the removal of a number of trees. We currently do not have any such ordinance, but Michelle's managed to pull together a number of townships which do, one of which is the city of Kirkwood, where I grew up. It turns itself, it titles itself Green Tree City. They have very specific requirements about if you remove a tree of X caliber, it must be replaced by a tree of also X caliber. And I would suggest that we consider employing something like that. I think that's something that we could anticipate loss, especially as some of our homes are aging now. Forest Hills has certainly seen a number of knockdowns and rebuilds. If those trees which exist and are older on their property are forced to be removed, how would we require they be replaced? Kirkwood's is the only one I'm immediately familiar with, but it's very specific about it must be, it cannot be any closer to the curve than X number of feet. It requires observation of the building lines, et cetera. So there's some pretty specific information in these, in these ordinances. So again, they were fifty something pages, so I did not ask Michelle to print those out. But I think we can get your links, so you can take a look at those.
She printed them.
You did print them?
I, I, there are 33 sheets.
Oh, okay.
So it's just 33 pages rather than 54.
Okay, they're all in here then. Okay. Okay, all right. Will you guys please take a look at those? And give me your thoughts, and we will continue to discuss this next month. Okay? We are also looking at hosting another trustee meeting here in the next month or so. When I first was elected, one of the things I suggested was, previously, there was maybe one trustee meeting a year between the mayor and the council members and the trustees in, in the city. And we hosted one a few months ago and received some very good feedback from it. So Michelle and I are looking at dates to do this again and talk to the folks in the HOAs. I think it gives us a good chance to meet face to face with you guys and understand what concerns you have or any questions. Lynn and Jeff, do you have any update or input on the King's Point extension? And Lynn, thank you for correcting my dates on the viability of the ARPA fund application. And for some reason, I have 24 in my mind, and you're right. Thanks for catching the 26. Maybe, you know, maybe Cur's Mill Trailers can work within that.
Did they, did they send a, an extension? I didn't see the extension.
There was a note that we received from Eric Mesper today asking exactly what he had to submit to acquire that extension. And I didn't, I think we responded to him and just said he had to submit his original form. Does he have to redate that, I think? Does he have to change the dates on that?
Brock, remember with that?
We didn't really put any hard requirements on it, other than to come to us and let us know that you can't start yet.
Send us an email.
Can we have an extension?
A reason why, you know, just, you know, do we don't?
Scheduling materials.
Yeah, right. And that's pretty much what his rationale was, so. So I sent a note back, I think effectively, to that direction. And Brock, I apologize, I forgot to put your name on it. I put Andrew's and Jeff's because they're Ward One, and Lynn and I had talked, so I'll forward that to you. If you guys can keep in touch with Eric and let him know what they need to do.
I'll do that, okay.
The woman from St. Louis County Street Department has been extremely reactive. She's been very good to work with. What was the, who came out today asking, oh, that was Wastewater. Was it Wastewater?
Property, what was it? Nuisance Property Unit. And, and, and he was looking at something that, from Jenny Cliff that backs up to
Yes.
Cur's Mill Road.
Right.
And kind of undermines the sidewalk.
And that was part of a discussion that I had with this woman when this all started back several months ago. Mark Carter was kind enough to put me in touch with her. Her name's Stephanie Streeter, and she has just been delightful. She was the one that I called when Tom Forest Hills Ridge asked about extending the left turn lane. I called her on a Monday, and by Thursday, that road had been repainted. It was just boom, and she was right on it. So she is obviously aware of that rough patch of Cur's Mill from where the wall ends across from Marquette. If you're going toward Clarkson, the wall ends there, and it's pretty raggedy. It's alongside the creek banks there, but it's not very well kept. So I want to see if we can get them to continue to mow that a little bit better during the summer, at least through the crest of the hill, so it's not so weedy looking. But she was, she's just been really nice to work with. So anyway, King's Point there is obviously trying to get their easement taken care of, but Eric said they traveled in the holidays, and then he lost track of it, so he's behind the eight ball. But I think he'll manage to get that done. Then the last thing, Michelle and I have been to a number of township meetings. Specifically, we went to Manchester's last night, and we were able to observe a number of things about their functionality that really moved along. And one of the reasons, we've seen this before, was it Twin Oaks that did the same thing, I think? The reason they move along so quickly is, prior to a meeting, a monthly meeting, they have a brief working session. And that, it's during that working session that they discuss a lot of the things that we're talking about here right now. And it facilitates, you walk into the meeting, everybody pretty well knows what they feel about things, how they're going to vote. It's a vote, you're done, you're finished. So it is a little more time, in the sense that it's split up, but it really precipitates the meeting. Andrew and I were talking about that today, and I think he is pretty much in favor of it. I know I've suggested it on a number of occasions. So again, I'd look forward to hearing your feedback on that. And with that, I'm done. So Lynn, do you have anything to report?
Nothing. I'm Ward Three. I'm still working on the cyber insurance. Travelers has a couple additional questions, and Andrew's working with the insurance agent to get those resolved, and hopefully we'll get a bid from them, and that'd be three bids.
Cool. Jeff?
I have nothing from Ward One.
Yay.
Ward Two's quiet on my side.
Awesome.
Nothing?
Okay. Andrew, if you have anything, can you weigh in?
Sure. Yeah, as you mentioned, we have been fortunate enough to make some contact with some additional IT companies after the first round went rather slowly. So thank you to Michelle for that. And also, Lynn just mentioned the cyber insurance. I did speak with David Leighton and got kind of cleared up on what he was looking for. And we should be able to move forward with that for cyber insurance now.
Awesome. That'd be great. Okay, thanks, Andrew.
And hope you feel better.
Yeah.
Thanks. Over.
Ribbit, ribbit, froggy. Okay, moving along, we have unfinished business. I did want to mention one thing that I have seen in almost every, I have seen in every township meeting facility I have been in, and it is their security. They have, many, if not all of them, have bulletproof glass between the staff and someone who walks in an office. I have mentioned before, I'm very uncomfortable with the accessibility that Michelle and Andrea are exposed to, especially when they're there overnight, or at night, late nights after this building closes, and/or Saturdays on the weekend when there's no one here. So we are going to look into some security options. And Brock, that was something I wanted to talk to you about, if you would consider working with me on that. I've got some folks I want to meet with and would be, love to give you some information. We can start working on that.
Yeah, we talked about this last month. I think everyone's in favor of something, so.
So, and if we are man, if we manage to do the new, if the spatial modification works, I got some really good ideas about utilizing that. I think that would be a good way to go. And this is all for, we can use this all with the ARPA funds. This will all be covered. So new business, I guess I jumped the gun a little bit there. It was concerning the tree protection and the logo, which we've already covered. So Michelle, you, the audit, do we have anything we need to discuss about the audit, or do we want to?
There was nothing special on the audit. Patrick, did you have a, a report that you wanted to give?
I'm sorry, I left out our attorney.
No, I'm very pleased to report that we have not been sued, no one has threatened us, and all is quiet on the legal end of things.
Well, it's, you know.
May I say that? Yeah. May I say that? Something that'll happen.
It's only 7:15, so things could change.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So I guess, do I hear a motion in a second to discuss and or vote to accept the audit?
I make a motion to accept the audit.
Second? Eyes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Audit is accepted as stands. Anybody have any miscellaneous comments, subjects, things you want to discuss? Overwhelming cricket silence? I guess that's no. Yay. I know, this is amazing. I'm so excited. Yeah, we don't, I don't anticipate a closed meeting at this time, but I would like to send out a note about a working session, and I will make that convenient to everyone's availability, if at all possible, if we feel the need to do that. With that said, do I hear a motion in a second to adjourn?
I may adjourn.
Second, please.
I'll second that.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Damn, that was a fast question.